Good evening, everybody. I'm wearing a mask, so if anyone is having a difficult time hearing me, would you just somehow raise your hand or let us know? So tonight, I welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you so much for joining this group. And I want to welcome our new council people to this special discussion. And I have a prepared statement, and we'll go from there. This will not be an easy discussion tonight. Mayor Fritz, I would like to believe that what he was in his true interest of the city. And unfortunately, many actions were taken outside the council's knowledge and outside the scope of his position. So the division started. All the comments will be directed to me. And if you would like to talk to past councilmen or any other city employee, please take your time to talk to them directly. Or if you choose, if they choose, you may speak to them tonight in this forum. The intention of this discussion is to help us all move forward and to heal our divisions in the best interest of the city. This is how the meeting will be organized tonight. All microphones will be muted, so no one will comment to an open mic. I will take questions in the comment box or by raising your hand. I will attempt to answer all your questions in the order of the first raised. I ask everyone to please be respectful to anyone who comments or has questions. If I feel it's inappropriate, your mic will be muted, and we will move to the next in line. This forum was, has been properly posted, and I have been assured we can move forward. Many of our citizens have asked for a discussion of the July 16th meeting, and this was the best venue I've think of. We cannot deal with our important business on our October 13th meeting if we keep looking backwards. No business will be discussed tonight. All members of our new council may participate under the same rules as our citizens. My concern started at our annual meeting last year under the guidance of a former manager. I take blame for this meeting as a councilman, as I should have asked sooner for the budget to be reviewed. However, that was not what happened. At the annual meeting, we were presented with a final budget without review or time to comment or make changes. At that meeting, it was announced the police budget would slash two or three positions from the force. It was a total shock to me, and I argued that these officers and the chief were not consulted, and the police positions were in jeopardy. Any budget should be discussed with the department head and not randomly reduced or increased without council approval. These officers are people with families, and many of them with several years of dedicated service. One officer had just been hired with the manager's okay, but within weeks was going to be included in the reduction force. This action led directly to the formation of a police union and overall distrust between the police force and the administration. This one action has led to raises in other departments that had been negotiated directly with the employees independently in the past. I am a strong supporter of our present police force and Chief Merkel. Several years ago, the city voted overwhelmingly to build a new police station and build a police force that earned the respect of our citizens and that of the towns around us. I believe our city has accomplished this mission. Due to this trust, we have been able to contract with the town of Addison to help with their own town policing and bring additional revenue to support our police budget. I envision a contract with our neighbors similar to the mutual aid system that the fire departments now use. Virgens is not an island onto its own, but a nucleus for our five towns. Other events came to my attention that the former mayor was working further outside the council acknowledgement and consent. One of these meetings was a meeting between the mayor, an alderman, and the sheriff. What these meetings were intended to accomplish is beyond my understanding. I was not part of this meeting, but it opened a rift between Sheriff's Department and the attack on the chief of police. It has been proven that the accusations against Chief Merkel were a personal attack without merit and damaging to our chief personally and professionally. At two of our regular scheduled meetings, our mayor misspoke about his interactions with the chief. It is important to take a councilman or a mayor at their word and not have the doubt that a word is truthful. On at least two occasions, I reminded all of us that we only represent our citizens when we are convened as a council, and a mayor can only conduct city business with a vote of the council. The next meeting that I became aware of was between the former manager, the former mayor, and another alderman, and found that the group was trying to turn the Bixby Library back to the library board and off the city rolls. This whole idea was never discussed at the meeting of the council, and his history has proven the scenario is not sustainable. The next decision made by the former mayor was a creation of the citizen review board. Again, it was not brought to the attention of the council until several of us tried to join the meeting, and we were told that the meeting was not open to the public. This was a group that no one on the council objected to, but the process of creating the group was out of the realm of the mayor. When the council became aware, it was unanimously endorsed by the council. The process of selecting the members should have been made to the general public so everybody could have been considered. It is the process that I objected to and felt the public did not know the goal of the new committee. I look forward to their recommendations as we move forward as our new council. The next incident was the mayor's interference with the Virgens partnership. At a meeting of the board, the former mayor introduced himself as representing the city as the mayor. During this session, he criticized the accomplishments of the partnership and his leadership. The partnership does not report to the city, and his actions were again out of order and without council knowledge. On July 14th through 15th, and I'm not sure which date it was, Mayor Fritz accused Chief Merkel and his police force of threatening policing. I saw this as a serious concern as we are implementing a police review board, and we were asking citizens for the pros and the cons of our policing policies. I am not sure why, and it is not for me to guess, the timing of this charge. However, because it was a complaint by the mayor and with a thumbs up to the manager, the infamous meeting was scheduled. Our manager did what I think most people would agree with and put his attentions to acting on a potential issue in hosting the meeting. While preparing for this meeting, the manager received a chain of texts from the mayor expressing his own distaste for the police department. This began to look like a personal vendetta. I was not brought into the fray until the texts continued to threaten me and another councilman. I will say, if he had taken me to the woodshed, there would have been a good chance he would regret that decision. I did not feel threatened, but the disrespect the mayor showed for his equals on the council was more than unprofessional, but showed total disregard for the councilmen who may have differing views. A great group contemplates all views and comes to a consensus that is best for the city and not for one's own interest. I did become aware of the mayor's text about 7:30 in the evening. I was shocked and at some time taken back by his crude and racial comments. Jeff Fritz brought his downfall on himself. There was no coup, but the result was nothing I could have expected. I had a prepared letter hoping I would not have to read it, but knew in the end Jeff would try to cover his personal thoughts and not disclose his true feelings about the man, a man who has served us with truth and professionalism not shown by himself. I am very proud of our chief and his officers. Transparency is important to all of us, but where was his? Hidden behind a letter that was a lie and a cover-up of his true intentions. This shit city should be run by honesty with respect for open meeting laws and include people elected by all of us and not run by elitists of the community with total disregard for those who elect us. When I asked the mayor for his resignation, he did not react as he did, should not have reacted as he did. It was the mayor that asked for the vote of the board, not me. I could have reminded the audience, he could have, excuse me, he could have reminded the audience that he was elected mayor and would stay on until his term ended in 2021, and the electorate could vote their hearts. He is the one who demanded the vote, and in a five-to-one vote, Jeff left the meeting. I also question the intentions of the elected councilman who must have had common decision to quit within the same 20-minute period. The secret emails and phone calls among the elected officials continue. It was not me that walked away from the city when our city needed leadership and transparency. It was them. This city has always known my position on every issue as I do not hide behind the scenes in secret meetings and emails. If any of you condone the former mayor's position, I welcome you to invite him back in March to run again, and only if he understands his positions and the rules of the game. I do very much look forward to working with the new council with their ideas and new vision for the future. We need to move forward, and I put the past behind us and look forward to a united city. I now invite you to ask me questions, and thank you for your time while I listen to your concerns. When you speak or raise your hand, please give your name and your address so that we can record it for the minutes. If you were on a phone, please plus star nine to be able to speak. Thank you very much.
Jeremy Holm.
Jeremy?
Hi, Mayor Donnelly. Thank you for having this meeting. Jeremy Holm, and I live on Main Street.
Sorry, we missed some of that.
My name is Jeremy Holm, and I live on Main Street. I thank you, Mayor, for your statement, and I appreciate your offer to be transparent. I just have a couple of questions at the outset. You described a police department that's respected around the county. I'm wondering what steps you're going to take to mend the rift between Sheriff Peter Newton and Chief George Merkel. Further, I'd like to know if Virgens has paid back the money that we owe the Highway Safety Fund for the hours that Chief Merkel logged where he was in two places at the same time. Honest mistake for which the state's attorney declined to prosecute him. I'm glad that happened. I would like to know if we paid that money back, or we expected to. Is it something that we should plan in the future for? My second question is, how big do you think?
Let me answer it one at a time, so I don't forget.
Ask two more, and then I'll get off and be out of your way. How big do you think the police force should be? How many officers should have at its best place? And my final question is, how will you go about selecting the committee for the police oversight board? Thank you.
Okay, so let me, if I can remember all of them in order. As far as repairing the rift between the Sheriff's Department and the chief of police, I do not have all the information this early. We haven't met since July, so I do not know what the exact situation is and what caused it. And I intend to find that out when all the council members are gathered together, and I will certainly report that to you. As far as the money, I'm not sure what money you were talking about. There was, the Attorney General's Office found that there was no, there was a clerical error, and that no money was to be paid back. So I'm not quite sure what you're getting at there. And the third question is, how many do I think is appropriate on the police force? I've made that very clear. I think that we have a great police force at the number that we have now. However, I'm not the only one that makes that decision, and that's why I said a consensus of the council is needed for any of us to make a decision. I am not the decision maker. I am one of the decision makers.
Matt Chabot. It's saying, "Ask to unmute," Matt. Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Donnelly, I just want to correct a couple of misstatements from your opening comments. Number one, I apprised you personally at your business residence on Main Street in advance of my proposal to reduce the Virgens Police Department budget last year. Additionally, I met with Chief Merkel in my office and had the exact same conversation. So to say that you weren't apprised, nor was our department head, is simply an untruth. Additionally, there were multiple budget work sessions that worked the numbers forward, and a comment that somehow you were blindsided at the final budget meeting last year, again, is just not factual. Everybody, all seven, six aldermen and the mayor participated in those budget work sessions prior to the proposal. I think as we're talking about transparency, I keep coming up against what I believe to be the truths of last year and your comments, both in this meeting and on Front Porch Forum. I would encourage us all to please work closer to getting to the actual facts. Thank you.
I'm just going to say, and I stand by my statement, that the council never had a discussion at all in the meetings, any of our council meetings, about reducing the police department. I stand by that, and I think if you ask all the other past aldermen, they will agree with that. We were all shocked by that comment. So, and if you can show me, and I'd like to see it, where you sent us the budget ahead of time reducing the, I would retract this, and I apologize to you, but I do not believe that that's possible.
Mark Honig.
Since you asked, I was a former council member during that meeting, and Lynn, I too met with you at your office. You called me to discuss the fact that Matt wanted to cut the police. You wanted to know kind of where I stood and how many police we should have prior to the meeting. This was not unknown. We had been talking about it for a few weeks. I don't recall whether or not it was a formal meeting, but all of us were in discussions back and forth, knowing that this was what Matt's thoughts were and how he was going to try and help us with our budget. So the idea that I was shocked when we got to the annual meeting is false. What I was shocked by was how the chief of police acted during that meeting. That's all I have for now.
And once again, I'll say, and I'm not saying that you didn't come to my office. I don't particularly remember that, but even if you did, and even if it was discussed, there was no council meeting ahead of that meeting that approved the reduction in the number of policemen. And I will stick by that. I believe it's to be true, and that's, and if you can show me minutes, I would love to see some minutes where the council approved the budget to reduce the police department. Again, I don't think it can be done.
Dave Small.
At the risk of, you know, being redundant, but Mayor Donnelly, I also had a meeting with you. I came to your office before driving to work one morning, and we discussed it. And you and I talked for about maybe a half hour, hour about the budget and your concerns and my feelings. And so I also had a meeting at your office to discuss this before a meeting. And I'm happy to pull up the email and find it, and if you want me to, where we arranged the meeting. Thanks.
Again, that's not my point. My point is, we may have been talking individually about what the budget was, but at no time did the mayor present a budget reducing the police department at any time during a regular council meeting. And again, if you think that's true, then show me the minutes. Most budgets are presented to the council for their finalization one or two months ahead of the annual meeting. That was not done. And again, I'm saying, yes, people may have spoken about it, but as I recall it, there was never ever a consensus to reduce the police budget.
There's no hands raised.
There's no other questions? We don't see any hand raised. You have to do it mechanically.
Anne Hasinga.
I understand the fact that there's no minutes described. As a new council member coming in, and since this meeting is called on the version of transparency, it seems that multiple people have come forth with questions about this budget. I'm wondering, with us moving forward, is this how we're going to continue to operate? Or is this going to be? I mean, this should be like open, not necessarily open minutes. If you've had conversations with these people, then you should know that that was their feelings. I know I've had conversations with you. You knew my feelings about this being an actual meeting. How do we get past all of this?
Well, let me first, let me go back to part of what I said. The councilmen that are elected and the mayor have specific roles that they play. I can meet with you, Ian, I can meet with Dicky, I can meet with David, I can meet with Boal independently. We can bosh, we can all share our ideas, but unless we're in a regular or especially called meeting, no decisions can be made, and no decisions will be made. There should have been a budget presented to the council that said, and I'm not disagreeing with Matt, that we might have had these conversations on the side, and I'm not discrediting that at all. What I'm saying is, it should have been brought to the council meeting before the annual meeting and say, "This is what I'm recommending. I need your approval of this budget." Ian, that's the way it's supposed to go, and that's the way it will go while I'm mayor. I don't want any controversy. I want it to be done the way it's supposed to be done with the rules of the council and the rules of the mayor. I'm not going to have secret meetings. I am not going to have secret emails. I have been so forthright while I've been on the council. Everyone knows my position. And when I talked to David, or I talked to Mark, or I talked to Matt, they knew my position then. If they knew that and brought the budget forward at the annual meeting and did not let me know that that was the plan, why wouldn't I react the way I did? It was unfair.
There's some questions in the chat. What was the date of the meeting where the police budget was discussed from Jill Killen?
That was the annual meeting, was the only time it was discussed. And I can't tell you what that date was. Isn't it March, no, June? Yeah, I can't remember the date, Jill, but it was June something.
Another one in the chat, "The police force has grown." This is from John Kidd. Did the city council approve the increase in the police budget to hire the new officers?
That was the manager's and the chief of police's job. We only do the budget.
Allison Rimmer.
Hello, Allison, South Water Street. Thank you very much, Lynn, for doing this. My question is procedural, I guess. I've been on several boards, and I understand the idea is that everybody on the board knows all the things that are going to happen at the meeting going into it. You share all the information. So I found it very distressful that you, David, and Dan knew that the texts from Mayor Fritz, which I do not defend in any way, were going to be shared. You had time to prepare a statement, as did David. The rest of the counselors did not know what this was going to happen. You cited several actions of Jeff that sound problematic from what I'm hearing, and to me, it sounds like this should have been a personnel issue. So somebody's on your board, they're not doing things in the proper way. They're saying things that are not right. I would have thought that the city's personal handbook would be, "Okay, what we do is we come to executive session. We bring it to the person who is in error, and we say, 'This behavior isn't right. What can we do about it?'" It doesn't get called out at a public meeting that is not on the agenda, and it's not what the citizens or the other aldermen expect to hear. So I am still very concerned about the way the meeting was called and the way that information was brought forth.
All right, let me.
Miss that in any way.
All right, let me go back over what my understanding of the evening was. I am only speaking for myself. I did not see any of the texts. I only read them over the phone. I, I am only speaking for myself. I did not see any of the texts. I was only read them over the phone. The mayor had asked for that me, that, he made the complaint. I'm sorry, this mask keeps flying down. The mayor made the complaint and gave the manager the thumbs up to call the meeting. Now, if you're going to complain and say that the police department was threatening, then you don't come on and read a letter that says, "I love the police, and Chief Merkel and I are getting along fine," when that is absolutely not the truth. So, when, when that me, when he read that meeting, I had asked Daniel to, actually, I'll take that back. David asked Daniel to put the, um, texts up so that we could show, because we did not think people would believe us or go into an executive session and find out that the mayor was going to be relieved without the public knowing. I read my letter, as I said in my statement. It was only prepared because I thought that Jeff probably would not tell the truth. I did on two different occasions, and maybe three, um, at a, at a, a regular council meeting, say what our position is and the position of the mayor. He continued to do what he did. It's not for me to discipline the mayor. Um, I've never, I've never been on a council where a mayor didn't do what was best for the city. That's all I can say, Allison. I'm just trying to move our city forward in an honest, transparent way. And I want you to know, this was very difficult for me to do this tonight. But I want to move forward. I want to move forward because we have a lot of important business that has to be accomplished in the next month. And I appreciate your comment.
Neil.
Um, my question's in the chat, and
Neil, you've got to, uh, you've got to, people are forgetting to say their name and address, so I just remind you to do that, please.
My name is Neil. I still haven't seen a justification as to why we should share our address, but it seems like other people are, and I'll say that I live on South Water Street. Uh, the, uh, question that I have is about the intent of this meeting, and uh, it felt to me that your remarks, Mayor Donnelly, were, were more of an attack on, on the former mayor, who I don't believe is even in this meeting, um, than, than any attempt to sort of move us forward. Uh, there are several pieces, particularly with regards to the, the CRDC, which is, again, I've said this several times in different formats, there's a difference between the Citizen Review Board, which does not exist, and there are some people who are under the impression that it does, and the Citizen Review Board Exploratory Committee, which did exist. And so, we just need to be clear with the language that we use, because some people are confused by that. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about the composition of, of that committee, uh, and there's a lot of half truths put out there, unfortunately, again, by you. Um, and I, I don't, again, like, I'm happy to put this stuff in the past, but it doesn't feel like that's really the attempt here, I'll be honest. Uh, and, and further, you, you and I, Lynn, had back and forth with email, I believe that other people did as well. Uh, I'm still not really understanding the format of this meeting, uh, particularly if it was warned, or it wa- it was on the city website as a, as a city council meeting, then why? Uh, why do all the other city councils have to participate like the audience would? Thank you.
Well, I, well, I'll say this. I'm sorry that you feel that this, um, discussion tonight is not moving forward. That was the intent of it. I did not intend for this to be a special meeting per se. I hoped it could be an open discussion like the old Prepper Barrels were with the mayor. Um, I had so many people, I can't even tell you the number, that asked to, to give an explanation of why that, what led up to that night. That's what I was trying to do tonight, so that, that we didn't have to rehash this on Dec- on, uh, October 13th. Um, we've had, I thought, very good conversations, Neil, and I am trying my best to get this group back together in a very, um, amenable way, so that we can do, I, you know, I have nev- I really haven't even met these new, um, councilmen in a meeting yet, so I, I can't say what is going to happen in the future. All I can say is, I'm trying to put back the past behind. I did not mean to attack Jeff Fritz in any more ways that I already had. I did it because I felt that this would only help explain what ret- led up to that evening. And I'm sorry if you don't understand that, and, um, we've, we've talked a lot, you and I, and I thought we'd gotten to a good place, so I'm disappointed in that.
Sue, Sue Rakowski.
Hi there. Can, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, uh, thank you. I appreciate this, this forum happening. Um, I, you know, you, you said that it's an open discussion, but it seems to be focused around a single topic or an agenda item, um, but that's not really what I want to make my comment about. Um, you, Lynn, you were speaking about wanting to follow the rules moving forward, and I think that sounds like an excellent idea. I'm wondering about the 7/16 meeting. It was warned as a discussion regarding accusations that the Virgin's Police Department is demoralizing and intimidating people. Um, and most of the discussion here tonight, when we're talking about, you know, supposedly what led up to the 7/16 meeting, we're talking about a police budget and, and some other sort of varied complaints that you have about the former mayor. And so my question is, why was that meeting warned with that agenda item, with that topic? Uh, do you feel that the meeting stayed on topic, that it was true to its agenda? And Lynn, if you could go back in time, what, if anything, would you do differently around that 7/16 meeting?
Thank you, Sue. Um, I did not set, you know, I wasn't mayor, so it was between, uh, our manager and the mayor to call that meeting, and it was with the mayor's okay that that meeting was called. I had nothing to do with the title, um, or the, the, or the substance of the meeting, except that we were going to address the complaint against the police department made by the mayor. So I can't totally answer that question fairly. Um, what's the other, the next part? You're, s- sorry, Sue, what was the next part of your question? Oh, um, I got, tonight was only for the sole purpose of trying to clear the air about that night. I will be happy to talk to anybody about anything else they'd like to see going forward. It doesn't have to be about July six, uh, the uh, 16th. Um, and if I could do anything differently, I probably would not have, uh, done that meeting publicly. I would have probably asked for executive session, but it wasn't, it wasn't my meeting. It was Mayor Fritz's meeting, and I was expecting the truth to come out, and that did not happen. So I do take responsibility for some of the things that happened that night, and I'm not ashamed to say that, because I think if we had done something in executive session, and the same result, I believe the same result would have happened, then why, how would the, wh- how would the community have any idea why Mayor Fritz had left? So, you know, if you want to be transparent, you got to take good with bad. I've never been afraid to, to be transparent. I've never been afraid to address, if I make a mistake, you're going to be the first one to hear it. But that meeting was not my meeting. It was a meeting called by the mayor himself. And if the mayor told us truth, we would have had no other issues that night.
Catherine Brooks.
Um.
Catherine?
Hear it.
We can't hear you. Next.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, we can now. Thank you.
Um, thank you, and thank you very much for sharing that if you had it to do over again, it would have been in executive session. Um, I really, really appreciate that. And, um, I'm so sorry you haven't returned any of my emails to you, and we could have, you could have told me that so long ago. Um, so I, as a citizen, you know, I welcome communication, and, um, that would be, that would be great. Um, the other thing about, I just would like to say, um, you know, that it sounds as if you feel that, that dirty laundry had to be shared in order for us to um, see what Jeff Fritz did wrong. Um, please don't underestimate us, um, you're, you're the people in your town. Of course, there could have been a report afterwards. Um.
Just, just to correct you, in executive session, if everyone does what they're supposed to do, there is no way that that information could have been made public. None.
Well, I don't know the laws in and out, so I, I, but, um, it seems like there could have been a better way. Um, anyway, thank you, and I, I really hope that things get better going forward. Um, thanks.
Thank you, Catherine.
Carrie McFarlane.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Lynn, for hosting this. I know, um, and for sharing your point of view. I know it's, it's not easy. Um, it does, Keith, you all, you all can hear me, right?
Yes.
Um, it does seem like there's a, a long history of, um, of personal grievances, and I think we probably saw the results of some of those grievances in that July meeting. Um, I think we've also seen some personal grievances aired on the city website. Um, and I worry that personal grievances might continue to influence city decisions going forward. So I wonder how you can, how you plan to ensure that personal grievances won't influence city decisions going forward, and, you know, considering, um, the importance of, of, um, maintaining good relations with your city volunteers, um, how will you ensure that personal grievances won't be aired in public?
Um, I, we've already addressed that. Uh, I've asked, uh, the manager and any other, um, employee that addresses me directly to please send all, uh, all the information to me before anything is posted. So from now on, if you see it posted, it's been by me, and I've located.
Sarah Strop.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Sarah Strop, and, um, I'm one of the co-authors of an open letter that got 246 signatures that asked for the city council to address what happened on July 16th. Lynn, I really appreciate your interest in addressing what happened at that meeting. Um, I'll be honest, I'm a little bit sad that it's only happening now. Um, it's been 12 weeks since that meeting, and, um, I think that folks in our community have been hungry to hear from our aldermen and from our mayor about what happened and why. Um, I guess it's better late than never, but, um, the open letter actually didn't call out you, Lynn, specifically. It said that the actions of many different people were disappointing, and the letter asked for the entire city council to revisit this issue. I know that tonight, there are many members of our past and current city council here, and together, it is those elected officials who will decide the business of our city. So I'm wondering if anyone else, um, who is on city council or was on city council wants to speak to what happened on July 16th? And then I'll also put a plug in for a community conversation, uh, that we're having this Thursday and next. I hope to see many of you there as well.
Sarah, I'd like to just address a couple of things that you stated, which I totally agree with. Um, I have no issues with anything that you said. I purposely did not call this meeting till after the election. Um, I felt that three members of the, of the council was not enough to call a true either special meeting or discussion as we're having tonight, and that's the reason that I chose to wait till we had a council. Um, there has been a question, and I'll ask you this one. Um, I understand that we, we've all been invited to your meeting tomorrow night, uh, and if the council is all on your meeting, would that not and have to have an open meeting law, uh, forum for that, or have you, is there some other way you're doing this?
Thank you. Um, so, uh, I've, there are a lot of city councils and former city officials who are here. Um, we, uh, want as many city counselors to participate as possible. Um, my understanding is that if you are not addressing city business, and also you are listening and not speaking, um, then it is compliant with open meeting law. Um, I hear your concern about that, but honestly, Lynn, I had that same concern about this meeting, that, um, we were talking about city business, that there appears to be a quorum here of, uh, members of the city council, um, but it wasn't warned properly. Um, for the current city council members who are interested in coming to our community conversations, John Kida and I are working with our facilitators to develop specific guidance that we can send to you, so that you can either attend the community conversation or be informed of the content of those conversations, so that they can help shape the business of the city.
That was just a question that I, that I was asked yesterday, but just so you know, this is a properly warned meeting. Meets all of the state guidelines. We did a ton of checking. Everything is legal and up to, up to date. I mean, we do not need to, we're, we can't make any decisions. That's not the kind of meeting this is tonight. This is only a meeting to discuss the, the July 16th meeting, but I'll also listen to, if someone has a, an issue that needs to be brought up to the council, I'd be, I'd be happy to listen to that, too. But at this point, this is a legal meeting. It has been warned, and I was just asked about your, uh, forum tomorrow because we had to jump through so many hoops today, or yeah, excuse me, yesterday. I just, that question is just one I'm trying to help you with. So I appreciate all your help, but this is a properly warned meeting.
Alderman Dicky Austin.
Hi, Dicky Austin. Uh, I live on Main Street. I guess two things. Uh, one, I did verify that, um, like, it is correct. We, uh, proper warning for uh, this one was converted to a special meeting, uh, was done just under the wire, um, but done, uh, posted in three public spots. Um, news was alerted, and it was posted on the city agenda. Um, I realize it could look confusing on the website. Uh, the news still shows it as the mayoral forum. On list of agendas, it is. This is a special meeting of the, uh, city council. Um, my question, uh, for the mayor, there's been some talk of, uh, what's been discussed as a unity agreement, um, of the now former city council members and current city council members of talking about the possibility of someone else rising up to take on the position to, uh, of mayor to sidestep the look of any impropriety, um, or as you called it, a coup. Uh, could you speak to that?
I have no knowledge of it, and I have no intentions of stepping down until I, uh, to the march, when the elections occur for the new mayor. I'm sorry you feel that way, Dicky. Doesn't start out right.
Alderman Austin.
So I, I just really want to respond real quickly to, um, to Sarah's question. Cause I, uh, I, I did get a copy of that communication as well, and I also, um, I'm glad that we have this opportunity. I'm looking forward to the, uh, the forum on Thursday, and the one following it as well. I'll answer any questions anybody has me. Um, what happened at the July 16th meeting? Um, I did not have a prepared statement. Uh, I said what I said. Um, I will say this, that I, I don't Um, I will say this, that I, I don't, I don't like executive sessions. Um, the privilege afforded to executive session is very, very limited. There's only three circumstances. It's pending litigation, the sale or purchase of a capital asset or a personnel issue. This particular instance, relative to Jeff Fritz, I, I would have vehemently opposed a motion to go into executive session, as I would do with any other issue with an elected official. So what I said at that meeting, I, I think was pretty clear. Um, and uh, that's, that's what happened. I mean, I became aware of some texts. I went into the meeting. I heard what the mayor had to say, and I responded. And that's all that is.
Alderman Jill Kellen.
Hi there. So, um, going back a little bit, Lynn, I just have a quick question for you about your statement about the executive session that would have potentially have been held um, regarding the text messages and saying that the public would have been shocked had, um, Mayor Fritz been asked to step down. Um, in my reading of the statutes, it looks like if there was an, uh, if there was an employee action or an HR action in that case taken, that that executive session decision would then have to be made public. So I think that in that instance, that, um, if it had gone into a executive session and been discussed privately, and the decision had been to ask, uh, Mayor Fritz to step down, that it would then have become public. And now, um, the question that was asked about the open meeting with Ms. Strop's, um, meeting, um, I think it's tomorrow. If you look at VSA Section 310 Paragraph C, it says that councillors are allowed to participate, where it would look like there's a quorum when it's a social event. Um, and she's right, when there's no city business being discussed, so.
Thanks, Jill.
Alderman Dicky Austin.
I just wanted to clarify, uh, Lynn, it seemed like by your response, you felt like that was an attack on you. Um, I was hoping to get some type of clarification of the, uh, what, apparently there was a discussion amongst the now former city councillors and the current members, as I understand it, to alter, um, the, uh, the setup as far as who would be promoted to mayor with Jeff Fritz stepping down. I understand you said you, you don't have any knowledge of that. Um, is it possible for any of the former members of the council or current, or members who were current at the time to speak to that? I'm just really curious about that process and how we ended up, whether or not it was a group decision to pass upon it, um, or how that works.
I, I don't, I don't know how to answer that, except that the, the chain of command is the mayor, the deputy mayor, and then the councilman. I was chosen, hand-chosen by Jeff Fritz to be the deputy mayor. And when he resigns, it's just like your vice president or whatever. They step up to the plate. That was my job. That was what I was elected to do. That's what I was chosen to by, due by the council. So that's how I got to be mayor. It's not something I, I sought out, was never expected to be. But you know, life changes, and you fill in and do the best you can under the circumstances. Um, and David, I think, wants to respond.
Yeah, I, I was aware that there were discussions to that effect, and I, I would, uh, I would, I would not want to see those discussions occur in any other venue than an open council meeting.
Mark Honig.
Okay, um, a few things. First, Lynn, you talked about if you wanted to know where the minutes were. So while this has been going on, I went back into the archives. We had special budget meetings on June 18th, June 25th, and June 28th. The meetings are all on the website, the city's website. Sometimes they're labeled "agenda" instead of "minutes," but all of them are there. And in all three meetings, you have something to the effect of saying you disagree with the idea of reducing the police force by two.
That's fine. And did any of the minutes say that we voted to reduce the minute, the police force by two?
You started out by saying you were shocked at the annual meeting that this was ever even reached, as though you had never heard this before. You had full acknowledgement that we'd been discussing it. We didn't vote on it until we were at a meeting to vote on it.
That's what I'm saying. That's exactly what, I was shocked that we would have that, have that knowledge not until the meeting of the annual meeting. That's what I said. I'm shocked, and I still am.
We had that knowledge starting on 18th.
Mark, you know the rules. I mean, you know the process. You don't vote to an annual meeting with a budget that has not been approved.
Came out of nowhere. Um, second, we did actually have discussions about changing mayors. I'm the one that initiated them. I talked to, I'm gonna, we're gonna be transparent here. I talked to Lowell and saw, asked whether or not he would be willing to step up to deputy mayor if you, Lynn, voluntarily stepped down. It is not something you were appointed by, by Jeff. You were voted by the council as a whole. The deputy mayor is a council member, and once we have our, our annual meeting, the council then decides who's going to be what was called senior alderman, and now we call deputy mayor. So it was a choice of the council, so it could have been a choice of the council to remove that position. I asked Lowell. Lowell said, "If, if Lynn is willing to step down, then I would begrudgingly willing to become that position." And I was making that idea because I thought Lowell would be far less contentious. There were, there was a faction of the community who was very angry at Jeff. There was a faction of the community that was very angry at you. I was hoping to heal that divide by bringing in somebody who didn't have animosity coming with it. You told, you thought about it during the, the month, that Monday, and said, "No, you're gonna stay." That's when I decided this couldn't go forward. Tuesday's meeting was going to be crazy and make things even worse. I knew that Jeff was going to be stepping down on Tuesday. I knew Tara was thinking about stepping down. So I checked with both of them and found out, yes, they were gonna, they were going to resign at Tuesday's meeting. So I suggested we resign on Monday. I would be the one to, to kill the quorum in order to not let that meeting go forward because it was going to be a train wreck, and things were going to be said that could never be walked back. I wanted the community to be able to step back and take a breath and figure out what it wanted to be. That's the reason it happened. There was no secret agenda. There was no long-term planning. The, the thought to resign and the actual resignation was probably a 30-minute difference in time. Those are my thoughts.
I appreciate that, and I didn't know that was the unity meeting you were talking about. I thought it was something else. Yes, Mark, you did call me and ask me to step down. Um, I'm not sure what the intent of that was. Everyone seems to, um, take the position that what happened to Jeff was my fault. The only one's fault for that is Jeff himself. He's the one that made the complaint. He's the one that asked for the vote. He's the one that left the meeting, not me. David, Lowell, and I stayed on when everybody else quit. And we are going to carry on with our new councilman, hopefully without any animosity, and start anew. And I have not, my intent is not to step down, is to fulfill the, um, place that I was chosen by, by the mayor and by the council. And I might remind you that I was elected by over 500 people when I was elected. So, you know, there may be seven or eight or 10 of you that wish I could be hit by a car, but the truth of the matter is, I like the position that I have with the people that support me.
Alderman Jill Kellen.
Hello?
All right, so, um, I've kind of lost my comment here a little bit, but there are a number of folks that have some pretty, uh, good questions on the chat. Um, so I think I'm gonna, if it's okay with you, turn mine over to John Kidd, who has a three-part question.
Yeah, I can't see the chat, so I'm gonna have to have it read to me.
I can, I can read it to you, unless John wants to take my turn.
Have to find John here. Hold on.
All right, I'll just read it to you. He said that he had his hand up for a while, and he's gonna try and text. And he says, "Mayor Donnelly, I do appreciate the effort to lean into this. However, I do not think that this is the best form to clear the air or repair harm. If we are truly trying to clear the air and repair harm, all of the people closely involved need to have responsible opportunities to build a common understanding of the events that led to the harm. Time and space is needed to explore the impact and how people were affected. Then, those most affected can identify what those people need to move forward and can make a plan to address those needs. Question one, from Mr. Kidd. Does the new council have plans to set agreements around how they will, how they will be with one another? Practically setting norms and agreements is needed for any group to accomplish meaningful work. I'm extremely concerned about the productivity of the new council if this is not done. I think asking the community for input here might serve the city well." And question two, Mayor Donnelly said that the city council is responsible for the budget. The question I asked was not answered. Did the city council approve the increase in the police budget that led to the hiring of the new officers? I have a concern that new officers were hired, and then the additional expense to the, had to be factored into the city budget, which actually led me to remember what my question was. Um, and I was just gonna echo Mr. Canning, uh, Mark Canning's concerns that, um, there did seem to be a couple of meetings where the budget was discussed. So I was a little also confused about the claim that the budget was, uh, an entire surprise. Cause it seems to me that if that budget was on at least two agendas, it couldn't have been a surprise, whether or not it was voted on, which was not the claim.
Okay, so let me, uh, let me try to answer some of those questions, if I can remember them all. So, uh, the purpose of this meeting was to bring out any discussion anyone had. I'm sorry that John doesn't feel that this is a good forum. I tried to think of what would bring the most people into a, to a conversation. Under COVID rules, I thought this was the best way. So if that's not the best way, and someone has another way to suggest to me that we do the same kind of thing again, I'd be happy to hear that. As far as the budget concerns, I still go back to the same thing. Yes, we had budget meetings that were, you know, brief into a few weeks before the meeting, but at no time did the budget, our police budget voted on by this, by this, the sitting council at the time to either reduce or increase the budget. That actually happened the night of the annual meeting, when people got up and spoke for and against the police budget, and I made a motion to, uh, to, for a 92 cents, um, tax rate so that the police budget could be saved. There was a unanimous vote at that evening. So again, you know, if you go back and look at the facts, the facts are that the whole council voted, that appeared to vote, there was no nay vote, so I, you're in a line, so I'm assuming that everybody voted, but there were no nay votes to that increase. So if you, if, again, if you have all the facts, you will find that the council did approve the 92 cents. It can't say that, yes, it goes to the police budget or goes to the, um, public works budget, but that was the budget that was approved. Does that answer the question? David?
So I'll, I'll try to answer one of the other questions that, that John had relative to, um, to process. And, and we actually have had discussions amongst ourselves, uh, with regard to adopting, um, I guess just ground rules as far as, as far as how we're going to function. And, and that's always been an, an interest of mine. I, I worked in management. I've worked in sales. I've owned businesses. I've been a consultant. Done all kinds of things. And, um, and I've been on a lot of boards. And good decision-making, regardless of the venue that it occurs in, it's all the same every single time. And, and where it really has to start is, is with a vision. Now, we have an entity in the city of Rugeens that's responsible for that vision. It's a planning commission. And they do a, a very, very good job. They're a very talented, very hard-working group of people. I was a planning commissioner years ago. I can't tell you how proud I am of these guys in terms of, of the work that they do, um, creating public engagement. And I think we can do the same thing going forward as a council. And, uh, one, one of the things that I have always wanted to see happen, and it didn't happen, I had spoken with, um, with the mayor and some other folks that brought it up in a council meeting, is that we really needed an opportunity as a council to step back and think about what's our vision, because that's really where a good decision-making begins. If you don't have clear vision, you, you really don't know where you're going. Um, and if you do, it makes it that much easier to adopt goals and take things down to objectives. There, there's a whole process called management by objectives. Um, anybody that's worked, um, in management is familiar with it. And so when you filter things down from this broad vision of, of, what do you want the place to be? What does it look like? How does it feel like? And we're, we're, we're close in some aspects, but it does need work, which is why I'm excited about these forums. Um, and I'm, and I'm also excited that we have this level of, um, of interest. You know, we, we've never had this many people run for these open seats. I think this is great. Um, and I think it's gonna be very, very helpful moving forward, but if we don't, if we don't talk about what do we want this place to be, how do we want it to feel? We've already talked about how it should look. Planning Commission does that. Done a great job. Um, and they've touched on these other aspects as well. But I'm hoping as we move forward that we can finally get around to doing that. Um, because you know what? Then, as long as everybody respects the process, the decision-making becomes very easy, and you end up with very good decisions. I, I've tried to do that personally myself. I can tell you what the criteria that I use for decisions relative to the city of Rugeens. It gets filtered through one lens, and one lens only, and it's been that way for the 20-some-odd years that I've been in an official capacity in one way or another in the city of Rugeens. Um, is it good for Rugeens? That's it. Plain and simple. So I, I think that we're on the right track here, and I want to thank everybody for coming up tonight. I, I think this is wonderful.
I also want to tell you that we're trying very, uh, hard to get someone from the Vermont, Nega cities and towns to actually have a meeting before the October 13th meeting to educate the new councilmen on the rules and how to behave and, and how to act at a council meeting. Those are probably not the right words, but, um, you get my gist. Um, so if that can happen, I think you're gonna see a lot less problems in the future if everybody understands what their position truly is.
Zoe Casla.
Um, hi, folks. Give me one second. Um, actually, I know Brian had a question a long time ago, and, um, I'd love for him to answer. It was up in the chat, and I saw his hand raised, and then I, you can come back to me. I just know he asked it like an hour ago, so I just want to get that answered, if that's okay, Brian.
Brian, I think you're on.
Uh, Goodkowski.
Um, yes, this is Brian Goodkowski. I'm a resident of City of Rugeens. And, uh, yeah, I did, uh, put a question up earlier in the chats. Uh, just go back to it. Where did the idea for the equity study come from? And how was the RFP able to go out with a council quorum and have any proposals been received? Uh, my understanding is that the proposals are due on the 13th and expected to be voted on the same day. How's our current, or how's our new council able to act on such a major decision under those circumstances? And is this study intended to supersede, um, the Citizen Review Board Exploratory Committee? And, uh, if I could also note that, um, if we are gonna be having this training- And if I could also note that if we are gonna be having this training with the Nega cities and towns, committee members need to be invited onto that training as well with the fiasco that we had in August is a clear indication of that. And I thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I'm sorry that we didn't, I didn't, I can't see the, the comments from here, but I guess the best question, the best answer for you is that my intention would be at the orientation of the new council that we would talk about, get knowledge out about all the things that are pending. So that on October 13th, they are up to speed on, obviously, we can't take any action at the orientation, but they're, they are aware of all the details. Hopefully that can happen in the next week because we're, we're running out of time. But we haven't been able to get someone to come and do that instruction yet. If we can't, we will probably still have a special gathering for the orientation and try to get all of the, the new council people up to speed. And both Mel Hawley and David Small, so whoever is elected also has that information when they come on board. Does that answer your question?
Brian, you're on muted.
That answers that question. It didn't address any of my questions about the equity study.
I don't know that at this point. I don't have the knowledge of that. We haven't had a meeting since July.
Martha DeGraw.
Yes, I have a couple of things. This is a tough crowd. It's gonna be a lot more than just one meeting, I think, to move forward. Because I, as you can't see the Zoom group chat, Mayor Donnelly, I suggest when you go home or when you can, that you see those and maybe answer them. A lot of people are making comments. I'm not sure why they haven't raised their hand and asked the question or said it, but I think it's important to be transparent that, that you read that, so you can see that. My second comment that I wanted to make, would it be possible to have a town hall meeting with the police chief? It sounds like the, there's this huge rift, you know, going on between all of the, between these different departments. And I'm just wondering if that's something that could be done. I feel like, I feel like that might be a help as well, just a thought for future.
I think that's not only possible, but something we can do. But Chief isn't here, he's at another meeting tonight. So I'd have him answer that himself, but he is not available this evening. So yes, Martha, I think we can do that.
Andy Kirkaldi.
I'm gonna pass on the question, thanks, Daniel.
Matt Chabot.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to respond to Martha. Martha, the chief has done periodic kind of town hall meetings at the parish. They're not well attended. I would encourage everybody to, to please do so. He's a wealth of information and a true asset to our community. I'm sorry that I feel that I'm in a role of fact checker to Mayor Donnelly, but Alderman Austin, did you vote part of the quote-unquote unanimous council approval of the budget last year?
No.
So it was not in fact a unanimous vote?
I, I was opposed.
Right, so you know, Alderman Austin, I think, you know, based on your proximity, if nothing else, I think it's important that you assist the community as things are being said that are not true. I personally would appreciate you speaking up in defense of the truth.
Will do, will do.
Sorry, Matt, I didn't remember. I couldn't see down the line and I did not remember that David had voted against it. It was not an intentional mistruth. I did not know, I did not remember that someone voted no. I apologize for that. You didn't what?
I, I didn't hear that you said it was unanimous.
Yeah, I did say that.
So, yeah, I did vote no.
Zoe Casla?
Okay. Hi folks, thank you so much. I'm really appreciative of us diving into these conversations. Sarah Straub earlier had mentioned, you know, the July meeting was something like 12 weeks ago. And she asked why we waited until now to have this conversation. And Lynn, you had said, you know, you wanted to wait until after the special election. And I can certainly understand that. I'm a little confused though, I think if the intention was to wait until after the special election, I'm confused why the other aldermen aren't able to speak in the same way. And if you really were hoping to have a more casual mayoral conversation, I'm curious as to why that couldn't have happened sooner. Thank you.
The aldermen are all, I mean, I don't know how many are on the Zoom meeting tonight, but they, they're invited to speak just like everyone else does. You know, my feeling is I work for the citizens and the council is second. So if the, I am, there's nothing preventing the council people from voting, or voting, excuse me, saying something tonight. And again, you know, it takes, it takes a little healing before you can make decisions intelligently. So I've done the best I can to get this meeting up and going. There was some controversy about how to do it and how to present it. I was doing it, I thought as a, as a public service. For, so those who object to that, I'm, I'm so sorry. It's the only way I knew how to do it. And if any, of any of the other councilmen, I think they've all spoken, so I, I'm not sure who you're talking about. But if there's anybody else that's on the council that wants to speak, they're absolutely welcome to. There's nothing here preventing that from happening.
Brian Kozowski.
Hi, this is Brian Goodkowski again. So I, I find it concerning that, that the mayor is not aware of what this request or proposal was. So seeing as Mr. Hoffman is the one who put it out and Mr. Hoffman is here, I'd like him to answer my questions and if I need to reread them, I'm, I'm happy to do so.
We have, we do have the, the emails and the information, but there's been no discussion about it, Brian. So I, I'm not sure how we can do that and do it without the, the rest of the council having knowledge of what's going on.
It, the request for proposal was put out without a council's knowledge? That's, that's, that's my main question I'm trying to get answered, is how was this request for proposal able to go out without a city council?
It doesn't need council approval for a request for proposal. And the council doesn't need to accept a request for proposal.
Okay.
It's, it's completely, it's completely at the, a request for proposal brings in proposals for the council to select at their sole discretion. And so it could be, you know, yeah, there's gonna have to be a discussion about it. But it's to solicit proposals for them to discuss.
Okay, so how are they expected to vote on these proposals on the same meeting, their inaugural meeting that these proposals are also due?
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be voted that day. They could think about it and vote the next meeting. Any number of things could happen, but there has to be a discussion about the proposals.
All right, well, I look forward to hearing that discussion.
Okay, we have about 10 or 20 minutes left. Does anyone that hasn't spoken like to speak? And share their love for me?
So Zoe, Zoe Casla?
Thanks. Lynn, I appreciate that you want the, all the council members, Lowell, Dicky, Jill, and Ian to speak. Would it be possible for the remainder of the meeting for them to remain unmuted so that they could speak as they'd like to in the same way that you and Alderman Austin have been able to? I think part of the challenge with this format is they have to raise their hand and wait to be called on. So would that be possible for the remaining counselors to be unmuted so they can speak as needed?
Well, that would be Jill and Dicky and Ian. I mean, I thought they'd spoken and said what they wanted, but we can unmute them. I did, the only reason we're muted is so we don't have anything happen like we had in the July 16th meeting. So Dicky, Ian.
I'm unmuted.
Jill, do you have anything you'd like to add or say? Why don't I start with Dicky? Dicky, do you have anything to say?
I think just in general, I think it's worth mentioning that we have 100 participants in this room and the level of involvement. I think David mentioned it earlier, is unheard of and I think it needs to be encouraged. Thank you, everyone, for attending. This level of turnout really shows a level of passion for our city and the health of it. And is really impressive. Lynn, can, other people have said it, I think it's important to say it as well, like the, the idea of holding a forum, knowing full well that there was some public issue with your actions personally, took a certain level of bravery and I do applaud you for that. I don't know that we have accomplished the set goal for this meeting. I think the, the conversation will certainly need to continue as far as being able to yield the divisiveness, but I'm confident that at our actual meeting, we'll be able to move forward with the backlog of city business. Yeah, I guess that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you, Dicky. I appreciate that. Jill?
Yeah, so I too, Brian, am interested in the RFP. We did receive some information. It was incredibly voluminous and, and I wasn't able to get to the bottom of the original contract. So I mean, if someone could point me to the, the actual contract that's involved and make it easier for me to be able to read it, I would really appreciate that. But I would also like to echo Dicky's sentiments, Mayor Donnelly, that it is a very brave move to, to take and put yourself out there. And I thoroughly appreciate the vulnerability that you've subjected yourself to.
Thank you, Jill. And I really want to tell you, I really am looking forward to working with the three, the three new people. And Daniel has something he'd like to say, so I interrupt you, Ian, for just a minute.
Yeah, if anyone included, Jill, I mean, if you want to come and look over contracts, my door is always open. And then I know, I know there's a lot of complex stuff going on, but I don't always have time for any of you.
Sure. So thanks for that, Daniel, but I mean, it sounds like a really lame excuse, but I have a pretty crazy jammed up day, day gig. If you could just email it in a concise format that those of us that need to review the contract can do that, it would be incredibly helpful. I assume it was included in that 300 plus pages of documents that you sent originally. Please.
Yeah, it's, it's in there. And I can, yeah, I can, I can make it, I can narrow it down for you absolutely. And I didn't know, that's why you need it. I can do that right away.
And thank you for the comment, asking if I had time for my alderwoman duties. Yes, I do. I don't think that anybody has time to read through 300 pages in a quick turnaround in order to, to get an answer in the, the amount of time that we were asked to get the answer back. So thank you for that question, though.
Thank you, Jill. Ian?
Right now, I'm good. I'd like to thank you, everybody, for their participation. I appreciate what you've done and I look forward to getting to work. Do I go to Dicky a little bit? I think there's quite a bit of work left to be done to get to the bottom of this, not to the bottom, but get some cohesiveness to the city. And some healing. I think there's still quite a bit of work left to be done. I look forward to starting it.
I think if everybody just gives us a fair chance, you're gonna find that we're very reasonable. We're not hotheads. We, we will differ in our opinions, but I think a great council shares opinions and then makes a concise decision with each other. And there will be some divided votes. There's no doubt about it. But in the end, if it's the best thing for the city, I, I think we can go forward and we can all become a great council and not just a good council. Is there any other questions? So let's re-discuss the time. We've got six minutes.
I see Allison Rummer has a hand up.
Excuse me?
I saw Allison Rummer waving.
Yeah, Allison, go ahead.
Thank you. And Lynn, I really sincerely do appreciate you doing this. This is incredibly hard and the courage you're exhibiting this is wonderful. And I want to say that very specifically in terms of moving the city forward, you said earlier in the meeting that anything that's on the city website has been vetted by you. I went back to check and see if the posting that Dan had put up about the story about George Merkel being exonerated by VT Digger had been edited to remove the statement that I believe, in my opinion, or commentary, not necessary and reflects very poorly on the city quoting that I don't give two shits about the Virginians' police's morale, morale, morale is on our city webpage? That does not fit a good face.
That happened beforehand, Allison, and, and we are, we have acknowledged it. And I will politely ask Daniel to take that little bit down. It was, I did not see that ahead of time.
I know that you did not approve that because it was prior to you saying that you were going to approve everything going forward. But I do hope that now that we're moving forward, remarks like that cannot be on our webpage or our Facebook page. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
John Stroh.
John? Can't hear you, John.
Okay. Hey, everybody. Thank you for this, for this meeting. I sent an email a couple of weeks ago and I just want to say publicly and to implore you as a city council that I don't care how nice everybody feels that they are, you need ground rules that you all have agreed to that will guide your discussions, that will guide the way that you all act together. And I, I, we disintegrated as a city council because we did not follow those or even have those. And I really encourage the city council to build those together because you're gonna need them in when the going gets tough. And it's something that you can hold on to and you can hold each other accountable to. So I really appreciate that there's a new council and there's a lot going on. Please take the time to build those norms together and, and use them. And the first norm should be no surprises. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm going to, I don't see, is there one more here?
There's two more. Kathy Ross here.
Kathy?
Thank you, thank you, Lynn. I'm sure this is not, this is not easy. And I commend you for bringing us all together. I just want to second what Allison just said because I wrote to you and David and Lowell three or four, three weeks ago about asking Daniel to edit or to take off from our city webpage his comments editorializing, politicizing, whatever it was about the, when policeman, when Chief Merkel was exonerated. The other one I asked about, that you would please ask Daniel to either edit the, the post about the sidewalk contract where he talked about Facebook and da, da, da. To me, when people are looking at our city and wanting to look at virgens.org to read through those particular posts, it seems like a negative. You said that you talked to him. And you said, I can't tell him what to do. And that kind of got me because I thought, why can't you tell Daniel to soften it? To, you know, just do what you did on porch forum where you said, let's move forward. Police, police chief Merkel has been exonerated, whatever. But we have this politicizing and editorializing on our city webpage, to me, is such a negative to our city. So when we talk about moving forward, I think the posts that are on So when we talk about moving forward, I think the posts that are on our webpage should be less politicizing. And so, thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Going forward, we're trying to be as transparent as, as possible, but we'll also be very sensitive to how we appear to the public.
And I'd agree with that. I think that there's been plenty of politicizing to go around in general. And I think that, you know, certainly, certainly we can all do better. And, you know, I, I think that what Daniel was trying to do with those is, is just in the light of what occurred, you know, have a level of transparency. And so I think we can all do better. I mean, we can stop doing stuff like that. We can stop referring to the July 16th meeting as a coup. Just gotta move forward.
Okay, it is.
There's one more. Matt?
Hello, everyone. This is Matt White. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. I live at Maple Street, maintain a residence there. Also a multi-generational resident of Virgin's. Direct descendant of the Allen family. My family owns the Allendale Farm in Patton. Been here since the land grants. And there's something that I'd like to really speak to here today, a couple of things. And I've heard everyone's comments and taken notes. Virgin's had been a functional community for over 200 years. And there is a lot of history and a lot of tolerance here. And I think that needs to be fostered. What we saw and what I witnessed when I became involved in investigating this issue with former Mayor Fritz was that we saw a lot of divisiveness enter our community quickly. And maybe it was changed too fast for some older residents. And maybe it was expectations too quickly for newer residents. But there were some comments made, Mr. John Kidd here, a common understanding of what's going on. Some of you will know who I am because I've been pursuing an investigation since July. I've served many people in this meeting with FOIA requests and I have a lot of information. I'm currently working with the Civil Liberties Attorneys out of Charlottesville, Virginia. And I will tell you, there's going to be a lot of very shocking information coming out very soon about many of the people that are here today. And some of it will probably result in legal action. So although we need healing, there's a saying that we have in the Black Lives Matter movement, no peace, no justice, no justice, no peace. You know, that's kind of a sad thing. I think we need to kind of get past this. And I'm very concerned about this community meeting coming up with this, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what it's called, a unity meeting? Is that correct? Anyway, I don't know what that's supposed to accomplish because it seems that there's a lot of divisiveness back against two people who were victimized. And in fact, Daniel Hoffman as well. Daniel put out an RFP to get this equity state statement going. He didn't have to do that. He did that so the council would have the most options they could possibly have. And people are attacking him for it. There's a lot of people here that are holding their tongue that knows what is involved in this investigation. So I think you should really appreciate the people who have stayed there, kept their cool and called meetings like this because there's a lot more than you folks know. And it will come out, I guarantee it. So if you have any questions for me as a community member, especially of folks who know me, feel free to get ahold of me. I also write under the pseudonym The Ghost of Matthew Lyon. And everyone in Virgin should know who Matthew Lyon is. So thank you very much for your time, Lynn, your bravery. For Daniel, your hard work and honesty and forthrightness and help. David Austin as well and all the new incoming members. You're gonna have a lot to deal with. And as soon as you get in there, Dave and Lynn are gonna brief you on some pretty heavy stuff. So good luck. I love.
Matt, if you have information to share, I'd ask you to go ahead and share it now.
No, I can't.
This is not the time. We're at 7:30.
Why haven't we got any of that?
I don't even know who's talking. I didn't hear a name.
Somebody asked me.
Ian Heisinger. What, what? Does Ian Heisinger, what, what was that?
You'll have to call Matt White and talk to him about it because this is not, it's 7:30. I promised everybody we'd be done by 7:30. We've gone over. And Ian, you're welcome to call him if you need a telephone number or an email address.
Do you have knowledge of that? Because you can just email me.
Excuse me?
Do you have knowledge of what he's talking about? Because I'd rather it come from you.
I don't know. I have, I have not seen any of these reports. This is something Matt's doing on his own. I have nothing, I know nothing about it until he tells me what it is.
Daniel, this is Lowell. Can you please unmute Jill?
Yeah, hold on. Sorry. Go ahead. Sorry, Joe.
Sorry, I know I'm long-winded, but I, I just wanted to be able to have the opportunity to speak assault. I'm good.
You have something you want to add?
No, not anymore.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so everyone has, everyone's email and telephone numbers are on the website. Please be free to use them. Please know we are trying to move forward and I am particularly trying to move forward. And I know that.
Why did he say you and David knew that? That's troubling me right now. I apologize.
I, I don't know because I don't know what he was talking about. I've gotta mute you all. Someone's talking in the background again. I can't, I can't answer someone that makes a statement like that when I don't, I'm not sure what he's talking about.
It was me. It was Ian.
It's Ian Heisinger. He's asking.
He's asking what?
Go ahead, Ian.
Why would he make, I'm just wondering, why did he say that you two knew what he was saying? That, that's just.
I have no idea. You're gonna have to ask Matt.
David?
I, I don't know what he has for information different than I've given you tonight.
I, I don't, I don't think that's what he, what he said, Ian, but there.
It was what he said.
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't hear that. There is, I, I will tell you that when we get back to our regular meetings, there, there is a lot of work to be done. And, and we're going to be facing locally here as well as the rest of the state. I mean, we're in for some rough sledding financially. I know, I know nobody likes to hear that. That's a reality. And, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come to terms with a bunch of different scenarios that may present themselves over the next 18 to 24 months.
Um, I, I don't want to let this go by. A member of our community just spoke to having an intimate knowledge about legal proceedings against members of our community and spoke to say that both Lynn and David, the two of you would inform us when we started working. Let's unmute him to speak to it. I think this needs to be clarified or very least specifically addressed that Matt White just said that you would be, the two of you, Lynn and David, would be briefing the new members of the council on his investigation. And this was said in a public forum. I think that makes sense to, before we close this meeting. Like, I don't want to leave that hanging. That seems.
Never ever spoken to Matt White, so.
He's unmuted.
He's unmuted. So if Matt wants to address this, he can?
Yeah, please, Matt.
Who am I speaking with?
This is Dicky Austin.
Dicky, no. I have conducted this investigation. I will be handing over the information I have as it comes available. But I'm telling you, there is information that will warrant investigation further. Nothing has been provided to Lynn or to Dave.
So then explain the comment that Lynn and David would be briefing the new members of the council as to your investigation.
Because when I hand it over, you guys will all have it.
That. I'm not sure if it's, if I'm not following or if it's intentionally confusing, but it was this, that was very clear statement that you work, you've been conducting an investigation. We understand that, that you have submitted FOIA requests. We understand that. And you very clearly stated that Lynn Donnelly and David Austin would be briefing the new members of the council to your investigation. Not that you'd be turning it over to the entire council. How does, how does that work? Like, if the, the intention is to just, to, to be inflammatory, like, you know, I guess, mission accomplished, but I'm not entirely sure how that works if you're speaking to, having briefed two members of the city council that will tell the rest of us.
I have not briefed members of the city council. Whoever's on the city council currently, Lowell, David and Lynn are members. You guys are coming.
They're all members.
Okay, well, when you take office, I will hand all the information equally to all of you.
Okay, well, we've taken office and the oaths have been sworn. Like, what method do you, like, if you don't anticipate presenting in public forums?
There may be civil and criminal action tied to this and I can't speak about it further in this forum. That's all.
I can assure you, Dicky, I've not heard anything about this report.
I'm telling you, in the interest of common information, that there's a lot of work to be done and there's a lot of information out there that people do not have about past and present events in Virgin's. Okay, so that's what I'm saying.
David, Councilman Austin, do you want to speak directly to the fact that, like Lynn has said that she's never talked to him and doesn't understand what he's talking about? He also name-checked you specifically as having information to provide to the council. I understand now, while not saying that he misspoke, he's saying something completely different. But can you speak to that? This is incredibly alarming.
I don't, I don't have any knowledge of any investigation of anything. I mean, the only, the only thing that I've got is I always served with a bunch of FOIERS at West. That's, that's all I've got, which I, which I responded to all of them.
Can we unmute Jill, please?
Sorry, I keep unmuting her.
Boy, I'm starting to get a complex.
This goes back, I don't know why it goes back to me. I'm sorry, Joe.
That's all right. So yeah, I echo the concerns here. If there's some sort of investigation, what basis are you doing this investigation on? I mean.
Personal interest.
Okay. Are you going to be filing some sort of claim? Or are you just going to present?
I can't.
Well, you've already, you've, you've already spoken about it, though.
I think we're done here.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. We're gonna end this only because there is no answer to his. I have no idea about any report. I can honestly say that and not, I've never spoken to him. I have no idea what we're talking about, but we're getting away from the point of joining together instead of splitting apart.
I agree with you, Lynn.
Thank everyone for joining us tonight. I look forward to our October 13th meeting. And if we can get someone to moderate our orientation meeting, we'll do that as soon as possible. So thank you, everybody. Have a great evening and a great week, and we appreciate your support.